Next to the freeway and a developer based in the local area wants to build about 530,000 square feet, just over half a million square feet of this Class A office space in our community. This has been through public review, it's been through the planning commission. And in terms of economic impact of this project, one of the big impacts, as Jeff mentioned earlier, is property taxes. So with an office building, of course, we don't get sales tax, we get property taxes. Now, a big new office building such as this will generate more than half a million dollars a year in general fund money. That means the kind of money that the city council can put toward parks and recreation or police and fire. Some of the other benefits are community benefits, as I said. And what we try to do is work with developers and development projects to make sure that there's reinvestment in the community. One of the issues that we have is we have aging infrastructure. And as we see a transition from some of the older businesses that are starting to kind of stop or leave town, we are going to see, and we're trying to attract, more knowledge-based businesses into our community. And we're seeing this all up and down the peninsula. But one of the key things there is, well, we have this aging infrastructure. We have a lot of old roads and mobility is very important. The people talk about the first and last mile. It's about connecting the disconnected, connecting the workers to mass transit, connecting the mass transit, you know, when you get there, to your office building. How can we do that better? With this particular project, we are getting almost $4 million of reinvestment in actual building of sidewalks and installation of bike lanes and making it safer for people to get to and from work. So those are some of the key issues with that major project. So those are some really interesting economic development projects in our city.
As well as wonderful amenities that go along with it. Jeff, you talked about property taxes, you talked about sales taxes. Is there any other source of revenue that comes to the city?
There are lots of revenues that come to the city. Smaller revenues, fees that are paid for services, building inspection services, development impact fees, those kinds of things that come to the city. Some of the economic development we do in San Carlos also generates fees for the school district as well.
How do you stay prepared for the future?
That's a great question. Well, we have a great planning department. We have a council, a city council, that really focuses on doing long-term planning and strategic planning so that we do stay ahead of the curve. Economic development is something that's been very important and critical, really, in the development of the city for decades. Everybody remembers the slogan that San Carlos is the city of good living. But if you take a look at our city seal, it has industry and homes. There's a balance. This community was created with that balance. And it's our job at City Hall that we take very seriously in continuing that balance. Everybody fears change. We understand that. Change is hard. But the community needs to change. The system that we have set up here in the United States requires change, requires growth over time. It's our job to make sure that that transition takes place over a reasonable amount of time and that the scale in which development and change is happening is reasonable to the city of San Carlos. We happen to be going through a really intense development spurt right now where the economy is red hot and properties are changing hands and people want to do new things with the properties that they've bought. And we're working every day here at City Hall with those folks to make sure that the types of developments that ultimately get built in town fit for this community. Not only in terms of financial fit for the community and paying for those services, but also the look and feel and the quality of life of here in San Carlos.
And Al, do you want to expand on that and add some specifics?
Yeah, I think that we don't do this thing in a vacuum. What I mean by that is every good city should have a plan and we should do economic development in a thoughtful way. And that's what's happened in the city of San Carlos. We have a group called the Economic Development Advisory Commission or EDAC.
Who's on that?
Well, it's a group of people that represents a wide range, a broad range of folks in our community. People from the chamber, business owners, property owners, realtors. So it's a wide-ranging knowledge base that is appointed by our city council in that advises our city council on economic development issues. And they put together a plan this last year that was accepted by the city council. And it really looks at the priorities moving forward and what actions can we take in terms of economic development moving forward.
Financial health is so important to every city and it sounds like that San Carlos is in great shape. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Jeff, for joining me today. If you would like more information, you can visit San Carlos's website. This is City Hall in Focus. I'm Gloria Cohn. The majority of the sewer system in the city of San Carlos was installed before the 1960s. This is City Hall in Focus. I'm Gloria Cohn. To talk about the sewer system today, joining me in the studio is Jay Walter, the Director of Public Works. Jay, that sounds really old to me.
Well, it is, and that's one of the problems that we face with our sewer program. Because the pipes are old and we've inspected many of them, a lot of them have defects and so they have to be repaired or replaced. And that's a big component of cost when it comes to the city's sewer expenses.
You said you've inspected them. How do you do that?
We actually hired a contractor that sends a camera down all the sewer lines. He cleans them out first, then he sends his camera down the line, and it actually gives us a 360 view inside that pipe from one end to the other. And that way, we know exactly where the defects are.
And you will repair only the system that needs to be replaced or repaired? Is that how it works?
That's what we're shooting for because when we got all that video data back and we looked it over, we found that about 40% of the system has some pretty major defects in it. But that doesn't mean that every foot of pipe in 40% of the system is defective and needs to be replaced. It means that some places, there's a hole in the pipe for some reason, there's roots growing into it from where it's cracked, or there's some other kind of a problem where we may be able to just go in and replace 10 feet or so and be in good shape. But other locations are going to replace the whole pipe between manholes.
Are you surprised that it's only 40% considering how old the infrastructure is?
Yeah, it's pretty amazing that it's that little because you expect deterioration. But yet, infrastructure systems are designed to last a long time. So those other sections of pipe, well, you know, they're in reasonably good shape, but we know we're going to have to do some things to those too. But they just don't have to be done as quickly.
What are those pipes made of?
Typically, those pipes from that era are made of clay. And they have generally, say, six-foot sections that are stuck together. And sometimes, through displacement of the earth or other impacts, the pipes separate. And that strategy has been changed because there's been so many sewer systems that have had problems based on those pipes and that type of connection system.
What is the material they'll replace them with?
Typically, we use plastic pipe. It's a high-density polyethylene pipe that is much longer in sections. And then it actually, once it's in place, it gets fused together. So it's unlikely to pull apart at the joints.
Tell me about the funding of the replacement or repair of the pipes.
So all the city's sewer funding comes from the rates that are paid by our residents and the businesses in town. So all of the system is set up to where we have calculated the amount that needs to be replaced and the cost of that. And we create a capital program that we present to the city council on an annual or every other year basis so that they know how much we're going to need to be able to spend. Then we determine what the rates are for each of the individual accounts, whether they're residential accounts or business accounts or industrial accounts. And then the amounts are calculated and then the council approves those rates and then those are charged the following year.
And do you anticipate a rate hike?
Generally speaking, we have a rate hike because the capital program that we have created, it has a need of about $44 million over the, say, 10 or 11 years that we would plan to make replacements. So generally, we're looking in the range of about 3% to 5% per year. There are other costs.
3% to 5% rate hike per resident?
3% to 5% rate hike per resident and business. We have other costs that go along with it as well because we eventually have to take that wastewater and convey it to the treatment plant, which is not in San Carlos, but it's over in the Redwood Shores area.
Before I talk about and ask questions about the treatment center, you said 40% of the pipes are going to be replaced. Do you have a knowledge of when the others might need replacing or repairing?
Well, with the 40% that we've identified that have the most severe defects, that will allow us to go in and look at other sections of pipe just to make sure that we don't need to make some minor repairs there. 100% of the system won't be repaired or replaced, but we will have gone through 100% of the system to make sure that it's functioning properly and repaired where needed.
That's good to know. Now, the treatment center, where is that located?
So the Silicon Valley Clean Water Treatment Plant is located out at the eastern end of Redwood Shores, so right on the edge of San Francisco Bay.
And its function is to do what?
So basically, its function is to take that wastewater that we generate in San Carlos and that gets generated in several other communities and process it so that it can be disposed of essentially at the end of its treatment into San Francisco Bay as acceptable water quality effluent, they call it. But just essentially, it's not harming the bay.
San Carlos isn't the only customer of this treatment center, is that right?
That's right.
What are the other cities?
Redwood City, Belmont, Mendel Park, Atherton, those areas kind of generally make up the Silicon Valley Treatment Area of responsibility.
And you have to pay, the city has to pay, right, to have this waste treated? What is your financial responsibility?
That's right. San Carlos is responsible for about 15% of the flow that gets into the treatment plant. And so in that area is what we're responsible for from an operating and a capital improvement standpoint.
So you pay about 15%? And is this paid by rate hikes or bonds?
So it's paid for in the rates that are charged to our customers. So for example, the San Carlos rates that are charged have a component that pays for the city's operation and maintenance cost, the city's capital improvement cost, as we discussed earlier, where we're replacing or repairing the pipes. And it also pays for the cost to operate the treatment plant with all the processes that go along with that and as well as any improvements needed at the treatment plant to be able to keep it running at the proper standard and so that it can do its job properly.
How are the residents and businesses doing about getting the right products down the sewers to maintain the health?
There's some challenges in San Carlos. And in particular, about six years ago, the city was taken to task by a group called San Francisco Bay Keeper because we had a number of overflows that were being caused by problems in the city sewer system. So we've made great strides. In the last five years, we've replaced about $12 million worth of pipe, which has increased the capacity of the city sewer system, and we've reduced the number of overflows that have occurred. But we still end up with problems with hair clogs, grease clogs, especially in some of our businesses in those areas around town. And generally, with defects in the pipe, sometimes tree roots get in and that's a little bit of a problem. But that's less about what a resident or business does. But we still have foreign objects going down the sewer that shouldn't be. And we just need folks to recognize that, really, there's only those natural things that should be going down the toilet or the drain.
And is there a list of the natural things that either the city offers or someone else offers?
Not really. But again, it's designed, the effort is designed to try to keep the foreign objects out, especially in the business area with restaurants. Silicon Valley Clean Water and city staff will go and talk to those businesses to let them know, hey, how's your kitchen operation going? What is your staff doing to make sure that they're not putting things down the drain they shouldn't be doing? And so it remains an ongoing effort because the clogs are what create the big problem for us and the line backs up.
What is the single most important thing we as residents can do and keep away from our sewers and plumbing lines?
It's anything like, say, diapers, flushable wipes, which are really not flushable, rags, that's a kind of a general category for stuff that just ends up going down the drain, grease in the kitchen, and excessive amounts of material that you send through your garbage disposal. Really, most of that can be disposed of in your food waste container.
Jay, I have a two-part question for you. Why do you need that rate increase? And are sewer rates based on water usage?
Well, good questions. And the first part of that is, the reason that we need the rate increases for the next several years are because of the operational and maintenance costs for both the city's system and the Silicon Valley Clean Water Treatment Plant, but also for the major capital improvements that are needed to be done. These are significant investments that have not been asked for in years past. And in particular, at the Silicon Valley Clean Water Plant, this is a plant that was built in 1980 that has not been upgraded significantly since that time. So virtually all the process systems, equipment, and everything else are wearing out at the same time. And so they have a massive capital program. And that's what our 15% share goes towards at the treatment plant is to replace those improvement parts and everything else to help to keep it functioning and delivering the treated effluent that's needed. The second part of the question is, are the sewer rates based on the amount of water used? And the answer to that question is no. Essentially, the sewer system as it's provided to each of the residences and businesses in town, essentially, it doesn't matter if the particular location uses lots of water or a little bit of water. And especially from a residential standpoint, the pipes are the same size, the mains are the same size. So we don't have higher costs to convey or treat the wastewater based on the amount of water that gets used. It's a pretty common question to get asked. And yet, in our case, we have a system that has a fixed cost of operating it and a known cost to repair and replace it. And so we feel like a flat rate for sewer is probably the best way to go.
Thank you, Jay. It sounds like we could do a better job of maintaining the health of our sewer system. For more about this, you can visit the website for the city of San Carlos. This is City Hall in Focus. I'm Gloria Cohn. We've all experienced those exasperating moments sitting in traffic, especially when we haven't given ourselves enough time to get from here to there. I'm Gloria Cohn and this is City Hall in Focus. With me today talking about traffic issues in the city of San Carlos is the Chief of Police Greg Rothas. Chief, what is the number one complaint that you hear?
Well, that answer's pretty easy. It's speeding. People call us a lot, say that they have speeders through their neighborhoods. They're very concerned about their safety and the safety of their children. So clearly, the number one complaint is speeding.
And then what do you do about it?
Well, when people complain about speeding, the first thing we do is really try to objectively assess the problem. They're seeing what they perceive to be speeding, but we need to know whether or not that's actually occurring. So we have technology that we use and we place in the neighborhoods to actually see So we have technology that we use and we place in the neighborhoods to actually see the speeds that are occurring on that street. So this technology counts cars, so we're able to assess volume. And then it tracks the speeds. And it's able to say how many vehicles are exceeding the speed limit, how many are under the speed limit, what the highest speeds are, lowest speeds are, when these speeding is actually occurring, and that sort of thing. So we do a really good, thorough, objective assessment of the speeds on the street.
When you're talking about technology, is it those signs that flash the speed that you're actually traversing? Is that what it, that technology you're talking about?
No, actually, our technology is called Stealth, it's Stealth Radar. So what we don't want people to think when we're surveying is that we're surveying, because it'll affect their driving behavior. So it's basically a radar box that's concealable, and you wouldn't know it if you were going down the street that you're being surveyed.
Okay, so you're letting out your deep, dark secrets right now.
That's right.
What do you do with that data?
Well, we take that data back and we take a look at it to determine whether or not there is a speed problem on that street. And then if there is, to what, to what degree is it a problem? How bad is it? So we basically take that, that's our assessment, and we decide whether or not we have a real problem there.
All right. So let's say the people who are complaining are wrong, that you're not discovering speeding along the street. What do you do?
That happens sometimes. People have a perception that they're speeding. We live on narrow streets, and cars coming at each other at 25 miles an hour each have a basically approach speed of, combined approaching speed of 50 miles an hour, correct? So that can look fast, and it's, but it's not exceeding the speed limit. So when we don't have that, we let them know what the speeds. We come back to the community and we tell them what we found. But that doesn't mean we won't be on their street and we won't enforce on their street. Because the other issue is, we deal with actual safety and keeping people safe, but our job is to help make people feel safe. So if they feel that there's a safety problem and a speed problem in the neighborhood, we will still go in the neighborhood to show a high presence. But, but that's more just to make them feel safe, so.
What if the survey comes back and the neighbors are right, that there is excessive speeding?
Yeah, and that happens too. And when we do that, we first determine, we take a look at it. We're able to know exactly, for example, when that speeding is occurring, what time of day, we're able to know what day of week, we're able to know how far in excess of the speed that's occurring, whether the speeding is occurring westbound, or eastbound, or north or southbound. So we have all that data. And from that, we can then design an enforcement plan to go into those neighborhoods with our patrol deputies and our traffic deputies to enforce speed laws in that neighborhood.
And that would be your first process, right, is to put a patrol car there?
I'm not, we don't put a patrol car there. What we do is we, we will patrol the neighborhood, we will maybe put traffic deputies, we will use a fixed radar in that area, we'll do a variety of things there to begin the enforcement, including writing citations.
And what would be the second step that you would take if that doesn't work?
Well, then the next step really is engineering step. So we, we use the enforcement piece, and then if that doesn't work, we use engineering piece. And we have a very good relationship with Public Works. And, and we talk about doing some, maybe some design issues, choking down the street, making the lanes a little smaller, you know, using bulb bouts and those kinds of things.
I'm not sure I know what bulb bouts are.
They're just little curbs that kind of come out in the street to make, to make it a little bit more, more narrow and to slow vehicles down.
All right. And other traffic calming issues might be speed bumps?
We've done that. It's rare that we do speed bumps. There's some problems associated with using them, but we have done it, speed bumps.
What other complaints are you hearing?
With respect to traffic?
Yes.
You know, basically, the number one complaint happens to be speeding, but I'd say the number two is probably volume. It's, I can't get my kid to school because it's choked down, there's too many cars, too many cars going through my neighborhood, too much traffic, I can't get through this intersection. So probably number two is really volume.
And what do you do about that?
A lot of times, there's nothing we can do about that, per se, from law enforcement. They're not breaking laws by being where they are. But I think the community can. There's things that the community can do.
Like what?
Important thing is really look at public transportation options. If you can get cars off the street, you can reduce that, you know, those kind of traffic jams. When it comes to coming to school, take a look at the possibility, depending upon where you live and how safe the route to school is. It's okay to let kids walk to school or to ride their bike to school, you know, providing that they have, you know, that they understand some of the safety rules and laws and that they're wearing helmets and those sort of things. So those are options that everybody can consider to get some of these cars off the street.
And if I'm not a parent, yet stuck in that same school line, I might start diverting to other side streets. Does that cause a problem?
Yeah, people do that, and they know, they know where to go and they know how to get around it. And then some neighbors complain about that because they don't want what's called cut-through traffic coming through their neighborhood. But people have the right to do it.
Of course.
You know, I mean, there's no law against it. If people want to do that, they can. So a lot of streets are a little bit of victims of that, and they come to us to have it stop. But it's very hard to make that stop.
Let's talk about traffic safety in general. What is the primary reason for collisions?
Well, you know, here in San Carlos and pretty much everywhere, it's, it's speed, it's following too closely, and it's inattention. And when I say inattention, it's cellphone usage. So those are the three things that I think get people in trouble. Other things are unsafe backing, but those typically don't cause injury, they typically just cause damage. But the ones that are driving injury collisions are speeding, following too closely, and use of cellphones. And so we enforce vigorously those three violations because we know that if we can stop those three, we can stop a lot of the accidents.
When you, what is the cost of a ticket when you stop someone for talking on their cellphone?
I don't, I don't really know. There's a first offense and second offense and third offense, and I think, so I think it's stepped.
I, when I travel on Laurel Street, it's, you've got to be very attentive when you, because people are crossing the streets and right-hand turns and left-hand turns, and there's a lot of traffic on that area. Any suggestions?
Yeah. I think the best thing people can do on Laurel Street or streets like that, number one is to slow down. You know, the, the speed limit there is like, is 25. But sometimes I think that's too fast, depending upon what's going on. And, and then the other thing is, is to stay off this, people stay off their cellphone, because they'll get a ticket if they get caught on their cellphone, number one. And when it's, when a street like that is so hustle-bustle and so busy, things take place almost instantaneously, and your ability to react has to be instantaneous, to somebody stepping out on the street, somebody opening their car door, all of a sudden that happens. And so slow down and pay very close attention is probably the best advice.
And pedestrians have a responsibility as well, right?
Pedestrians do. They can't step out in front of moving cars. They have a responsibility, you know, when walking even to stay off their cellphones too, if they're crossing the street. I think, maybe, I don't know if you've seen it, where you're driving the car and you see somebody walking across the street on their cellphone, and they don't even know, they're not even watching traffic. So even staying off the cellphone's important sometimes for pedestrians, especially when they're crossing the street.
To recap, we can help ourselves by reducing our speed, not following too closely, and staying attentive, and put down those cellphones.
Exactly.
Thank you very much for that advice, Chief. We really appreciate it. If you want more information about the City of San Carlos, you can visit their website. I'm Gloria Cohn, and this is City Hall in Focus. The average house in San Mateo County costs over $1.3 million. The average rent for a one-bedroom place in San Mateo County is $2,600 a month. So how is a schoolteacher, or someone making minimum wage, or even a senior wanting to stay in his or her home on fixed income, supposed to stay or find stable housing in San Mateo County? There is a solution, and it's called Hip Housing. I'm Gloria Cohn, and this is City Hall in Focus. And with me today is the Associate Executive Director of Hip Housing, Laura Finukey. Welcome, Laura.
Thank you.
What does HIP stand for?
HIP stands for Human Investment Project, and we are a nonprofit organization here in San Mateo County.
And your mission is to?
Our mission is to invest in human potential by improving the housing and lives of people here in our community in San Mateo County.
And you have several programs to do this, right?
Yes, we do. We have a self-sufficiency program for families with children. So we work with two-parent and single-parent families who are in school or doing job training, and we help to provide them with housing support for a year to five years while they're working on their career and their educational goals. We provide them with case management support and other resources to help the families to become economically self-sufficient. We also have a property development side to our organization. So we own 15 properties here in San Mateo County, in Daly City, South San Francisco, San Mateo, San Carlos, Redwood City, and Menlo Park. And we also manage properties for the cities of Foster City and San Mateo. So those units provide housing for single parents and seniors, usually in studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments that are considered below market rent or subsidized rent.
You today want to specifically talk about your home-sharing program.
Yes.
So why don't you describe that?
Great. So our home-sharing program provides a great resource for affordable housing here in San Mateo County. The home-sharing program matches who we call our home providers. These are homeowners or renters who have space available in their home and need a little extra income, sometimes a little extra support, like help with household chores for reduced rent. And then we interview people who are seeking housing. So it usually is a single person, or a couple, or maybe a single parent with a child, and they're really struggling with their housing costs here in the county, looking for an affordable way to reduce their costs by home-sharing. So the clients interview each other after they go through an extensive screening process by the organization, and they get to make their own decision about who they want to share housing with.
I want to talk about the screening process, but first, let me ask you, your funding sources are from where?
So we receive funding from the majorities of the cities here in San Mateo County, including the County of San Mateo. We also receive foundation support and private grants and donations. And because the organization also is a property manager and owner, we also receive rental income that helps to support the programs that we offer at Hip Housing.
Let's go now to the screening process that you started talking about. Is there a real-life case scenario you could step us through to explain how it works?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. So we have a client, I'll just call her Cora, and she lives in the North County, and she's a senior. So a typical profile of our home providers are usually seniors. And we, so we set up a time to meet with her. She came to one of our four offices. So we have an office in Daly City, South San Francisco, San Mateo, and in Redwood City. But for our home providers, we also like to visit them at their home. So we made a home visit with her as well. And so what we do is we have a screening process where we ask the clients to provide us with proof of their ID, proof of their income, and the names and phone numbers of three-character references. And we ask that of both of our home providers and our home seekers. So we meet also with our home seekers in our offices as well. And the clients get to complete an application to tell us in their own words what they're looking for in a housemate. So why they're looking for a housemate, what is their lifestyle, a little bit about their home, or what kind of room they're looking for. And then that helps us to sort of narrow down the search for what their, what their needs are.
Sometimes do you have, you know, genders mixing as well?
Mm-hmm.
So an elderly woman doesn't mind a young student, a male student going to Stanford, let's say?
Exactly. So clients just really make their own decision about who they want to select as a housemate. So Cora selected actually two seekers through our program. One is a senior who had been living with one of Hip Housing's home providers for actually over 22 years. And her home provider had to go into a boarding care type of nursing home, and so she had to move. So she moved in with Cora. And then Cora also found a student to move in with her. So she has a multi-generational household, a senior living with her and a student. And so they've been all sharing housing together for, I think it's almost been about three years now.
Well, it sounds like it worked out really well.
It worked out really well.
Now, do you have to do background checks on folks?
Yes. So we run a San Mateo Yes, so we run a San Mateo County background check, and also a National Sex Offender Database check on all applicants that apply to our program. And clients have the responsibility of also checking each other's references. So we provide them with a list of questions for them to go over with each other when they're first making their phone conversation to introduce themselves, and when they meet each other in person, and then also when they check each other's references. So it's a nice way for people to get to know others through their reference-checking process.
Laura, can you remind us of the benefits for both the home seeker and the home provider?
So for home providers, which, as we mentioned before, are usually seniors who are house-rich but maybe cash-poor, they still have life expenses, and they need to have some extra financial support. So allowing a housemate to move in really helps them to meet those economic goals. And also, because our program does a living-together agreement with clients, it really helps them feel much better about our participation in the program and helping them formalize an agreement that will be put in place with their housemate. And for the home seekers, the average rents being over $2,600 a month, you need almost a six-figure income in order to afford an apartment here in the county. And so for them, home sharing really becomes a creative solution to help keep their housing costs low, and to stay close to their family and their friends and their place of work and other life activities that they are so connected to.
If someone finds him or herself in the situation where they actually have space in their house, or they need to find a place to live, how do they find out about you?
So they can visit our website at hiphousing.org, or contact our organization at 650-348-6660. And we'll do a little bit of pre-screening with them, and provide them information about the program, and then schedule a time to meet with them.
So are there opportunities to volunteer or contribute?
Absolutely. I actually have a volunteer working at Hip Housing this morning, and she's helping us doing some follow-up calls to our clients who are matched together. So we like to do that when clients start living together. So we have plenty of need for volunteers to help us with outreach, or help us with some client work. People can always make a donation to Hip Housing, tax-deductible. And if people have a room that they have for rent especially, we have five times as many people seeking housing as we do providing housing. So we have a real need for people that have space available in their home and are looking for ways to find a housemate to move in. We would encourage them to use an organization like Hip Housing.
What a wonderful organization and a much-needed solution in San Mateo County. Thank you for joining me today, Laura. If you want more information about Hip Housing or the city of San Carlos, their website information is on the screen now. Thank you for joining me today. I am Gloria Cohn, and this is City Hall in Focus.
To and from school.
Hi, I'm Karen Millinari with the San Carlos PTA Coordinating Council.
Young riders have been able to foster a sense of independence as they use the service to get themselves to and from school, the youth center, and downtown San Carlos.
This new route has encouraged people to think about their commute differently, realizing that they don't have to take public transportation every day, but can incorporate it into their schedules a few times per week.
To the San Mateo County Transit Authority and to Samtrans.
On behalf of the San Carlos PTA Coordinating Council and San Carlos parents everywhere.
From the Sequoia Union High School District.
From the San Carlos School District.
We want to thank you for this best service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're interested in finding out more information, including the route and schedule for Route 61, please visit www.samtans.org.
I'm Gloria Cohn, and this is City Hall in Focus. I'm here today with Al Savay. He's the Director of Community and Economic Development for the City of San Carlos. Welcome, Al.
Thank you, Gloria.
You're here to talk about a very exciting new project, a city-initiated project for the City of San Carlos. Where is this located?
Great. What I'd like to do is refer to a picture that I have on the screen. So why don't we do that? Why don't we take a look? So this is a bird's eye view of the general site of the Wheeler Plaza area. And as you can see at the left-hand side of the screen, there's San Carlos Avenue. But the upper part of the screen, you'll see Laurel Street. And on the west side, you'll see Walnut Street. So the blue area represents the general location of the Wheeler Plaza project area. And what we've done is we've acquired a number of properties in order to make it a rectangular site, to make it economically feasible, and have just the right area to be able to do a development at this site. So that's the general location in the community, right in the heart of our downtown.
And how did this come about?
It's really important to know the background and the history of the project. So in the late 1990s, the city council appointed a Citizens Advisory Committee to study parking in the downtown of San Carlos. And what that Citizens Advisory Committee did is they put together a report. And in the report, it recommended that the city should look at some kind of a mixed-use project with parking on one of our big public parking areas in the downtown. So that's the history of it.
And Al, sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, but when you say "mixed-use," what does that mean?
So "mixed-use" literally means a mix of uses. So for instance, you might have retail on the ground floor or office on the second floor. You might have office or residential on the upper floor. So a mix of uses.
And you went to the public, and then what was the next step that you took?
So we did. We had a number of community meetings. That's one of the things that we pride ourselves on, is reaching out to the community. And that's what we did. So we met with stakeholders. We had community meetings. Before we even put pen to paper, we said, "Look, if we're going to do this, what kinds of community benefits do we need to put into this? Or what would make it work for the City of San Carlos?" What we know is that downtown parking is a key issue in our community. We need more of it. People like it. So that was a key thing. "Hey, help us with the parking." One of the other interesting things that we found from our community meetings is people wanted an additional public gathering space. Right now, we have Frank Harrington Park right down the street, which is sort of a wooded, canopied, grassy area that people love, and we have a lot of community events there. People wanted another place to go. Essentially, this is like the city's living room. Everybody goes down to dine, to meet their neighbors, to bring their kids. We have lots of activities. So we wanted another public amenity in the downtown. So that was another interesting finding. So we had to find a way. We knew that this was really critical for this project to move forward and be acceptable, is to find a place for that to go. And I'll talk about that a little later.
And can you talk about the details of the design of this location and project?
Sure. Why don't I talk about the general specifications of the project? Let's just call it that. So there's 109 condominium units, and they would each be one, two, and three-bedroom units. So they're all for sale. None of them are apartments. Again, one of the other key issues that we wanted to do is provide public parking. So as part of this project, we were able to get a brand-new public parking garage in our downtown. And that'll have 264 new public parking spaces. I should, when I say "new," I mean it's a new public parking garage. Currently, there's 187 parking spaces at Wheeler Plaza. So we would be adding 75 new parking spaces for the public in the downtown. Another component of the project is, well, where are all the residents going to park? So there's 109 new condos. Where are they going to park? They will be parking underground. So a new parking structure will be built underground. There'll be more than, there'll be almost 200 parking spaces underground for those residents. We'll never see them. Although, we will be able to use some of that parking for employees of the Class A retail space along San Carlos Avenue. So we also, as part of the project, will be getting 10,000 square feet of new Class A retail space along San Carlos Avenue. And so those are some of the key components of the project.
When you say "Class A retail space," what does that mean?
Class A means the best kind. It'll have high ceilings. It'll attract a very good retailer to the City of San Carlos.
So that sounds like some real benefits, including the additional parking. What other benefits are there to the community?
So as I noted earlier, we found that people wanted that gathering space, and we had to find a place to do it. So what we did is we acquired the old Foodville building right along Laurel Street. What we're going to do in the interim during construction is we'll be knocking that building down, and we'll be putting valet parking there for the public during the construction process. Once we don't need that valet parking anymore, what we intend to do is reach out to another developer somewhere and have them build maybe a one- or two-story building right next to our public plaza. So we will then begin the process of constructing that public plaza that will link right up to Laurel Street. And then we'll have maybe a restaurant or a cafe open up to the plaza and really activate it, so that people can dine and meet their neighbors there and things like that.
And it does sound like a benefit to the community. Is there another design that you brought to show us what the final project is going to look like?
Certainly. So what I'd like to do is refer again to the screen. So I brought some pictures to show you. And I'm going to go ahead and get to a site plan of the project. And so essentially, what you're seeing on the screen here, and I'm going to orient you really quick again, Walnut Street on the bottom, San Carlos Avenue to the left, and Laurel Street above. And on the left-hand side of the screen, you see that purple area that says "retail." That's where that new Class A retail space is going to be, right on San Carlos Avenue. Along Walnut Street, you'll see where it says "parking garage." That will be our two-story parking garage. You'll be able to drive right in to the parking structure from Walnut Street. And when you drive in, we're going to have electronic signs that'll show you how many parking spaces will be available on each floor. The other part that I noted earlier is on Laurel Street, you'll see that area where it says "redevelopment." That's where we're going to put the new public plaza and maybe a little retail, commercial office space located there. One of the other key components is, you see that little red area there above Walnut Street, behind the retail? That's called an arcade. And one of the key components is to maintain our pedestrian mobility in our community. And we have a walkway that goes right through the Pacific Casienda Development Project across the street, all the way to City Hall. We wanted to maintain that pedestrian access from City Hall all the way into downtown. You can go both ways through there and also access that parking garage. The service alley will be in that gray area that goes from San Carlos Avenue to Cherry Street there in the middle of the screen. That's where the trucks will access all those retail areas in the middle of the screen. And so that's essentially the layout and design of the project from a bird's eye view.
When does construction begin?
So construction will begin in June. We'll probably, you'll start to see some activity at the site. We'll have to start working on undergrounding the wires and things like that, maybe a little earlier than that.
So just in a few months, it's going to start?
Right. So we're going to start probably in the June timeframe. And we're going to start by demolishing the buildings and then preparing the Foodville site for the valet. So we'll be paving that site, providing the parking area there. And so in June, we're going to see the start of real construction. We'll get our valet set up in there. And then we'll probably take about a year to construct the parking garage. The good news there is after one year, once that parking garage is completed next summer, we'll be able to park in it. Well, the community will be able to park in it. Then the rest of the development will take place. And that'll probably be completed in another year, maybe in summer of 2018.
So as a visitor, I'm going to come downtown, let's say in July, and I'm going to drive on San Carlos Avenue. Will I be able to turn left onto Laurel? Is that where the valet is going to meet me?
Yeah. So you'll be able to access the valet area there, right on Laurel Street. And there will be a valet attendant there. And we'll also have valet services over at the Samtrans building.
Oh, so that makes it convenient for people, and they can just walk across the street and visit whatever shop or restaurant they want.
Right, right.
Do you have an artist's rendering of what the final project will look like?
Certainly. So I'd like to refer back to the screen. And I have a couple of artist's renderings that I'd like to show you here. So if you look at the screen here, what you'll see in this first artist's rendering is this is as if you're standing across the street from Wheeler Plaza at the corner of San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street, looking into the project. At the ground floor, you'll see the archways there. And that opens up to an arcade. And there'll be maybe a restaurant or cafe on the corner where we'll have outdoor dining. As the eye follows the building up, if you look up the building, you'll notice that there's some balconies, there's lots of window treatments. And we call it variation in the facade. So there's a lot of ins, there's outs, there's wood, there's different sizes of windows and different colors and things like that. So that's very important in terms of breaking up the mass of the building and providing a really rich architectural style.
Yeah, it makes it more interesting-looking.
It certainly does. And in terms of the architectural style itself, we thought that was very important. And it really hearkens back to the Drake Building down at the corner of San Carlos Avenue in El Camino. It's a very classic Mission-style of architecture. You'll see also along San Carlos Avenue on the left, where you see those orange umbrellas, you'll see that the top floor, the fourth floor, has stepped back away from San Carlos Avenue to give it a more human scale. As you walk to the right down Walnut Street, you'll see more arches. And that opens up to another public plaza that will be available there as well.
And there's another view you want us to see as well?
Yes, yes, thank you. And so this other view is as if you're standing across the street at the Samtrans building, looking across San Carlos Avenue. You see those red awnings there? That's that Class A retail space area that I talked to you about earlier. And it goes all the way down to Walnut on the ground floor. You'll note again how that upper floor has stepped back away from San Carlos Avenue to break up the mass and lower the facade appearance along San Carlos Avenue. One of the other really interesting things that I think about this project is that on the left, you'll see a big archway and some people walking through that archway. That's Sister City Alley. So Sister City Alley is located there now between the buildings, but it's going to be expanded. And that archway represents the service alley. So that's where the service vehicles will come through. But what we've done here is we've thought, well, what if we limit service hours just to the morning? And then allow this to be opened up in the late morning or early afternoon, in the evening, for pedestrians to walk through. So to, and to add this to our new public plaza along Laurel Street. So this is a really nice amenity as well.
This is going to be a real asset to downtown San Carlos, right? Don't you think?
I think so, too. I think it's going to be great for the City of San Carlos.
Well, thank you, Al, very much for joining me here today. For more information, you can go to the City of San Carlos's website. I'm Gloria Cohn, and this is City Hall in Focus. I'm Gloria Cohn, and this is City Hall in Focus. Joining me in the studio today is Al Savay. He's the Director of Community and Economic Development with the City of San Carlos. Al, you are talking about a very exciting project that's going to be taking place in downtown San Carlos called Wheeler Plaza. So first of all, where is this going to be?
Great. So what I'd like to do is point to the screen, let the viewers see a rendering of Wheeler Plaza, just so that we can kind of orient ourselves a little bit. So that is a picture of Wheeler Plaza, the architectural design. It's a rendering. This is if you're standing across the street on San Carlos Avenue and looking to the project. And you could see some retail commercial with the awnings on the ground floor, and then the development beyond that. So that's the Wheeler Plaza project. So that serves as orientation.
And the construction begins sometimes in June. There is going to be some pre-construction. People will start to see about when?
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is show you a map of the downtown and kind of broader orientation, because Wheeler Plaza will be under construction, but so will a number of other projects in our community. So let's refer back to a picture. So this is a bird's eye view of downtown that you're seeing here. And in the reddish color, you see Wheeler Plaza in a red circle there. So that's the location of Wheeler Plaza, right next to San Carlos Avenue. You have Walnut Street running by one section of it. And then Laurel Street is really the heart of our downtown there. So that's Wheeler Plaza, and that will be starting approximately in June. Another project that it's important to note that will be starting just about the same time is just up the street is the San Carlos Transit Village Project in the other red area that's in a circle there that you see.
Is that a city-initiated project as well?
No, that isn't. That is a different project. It was initiated by a developer and Samtrans. So that's a separate project. That was approved. And what that project is, is 204 apartment units. Now Wheeler Plaza is 109 condominiums. So they're a little different. They're both housing projects, but they're fairly large projects for a smaller community like San Carlos. So I wanted to orient everybody to where things were. Also, I think it's really important to note that there's a blue area just to the right there, and it says "the Samtrans Transit Center Parking Area." there and it says the Samtrans Transit Center Parking Area. That's where all the commuter parking will be moving. So there's some commuter parking up in the red area now where the San Carlos Transit Village is going to be. And so that will all be moved to the south from just to the south of the Historic Depot to all the way down to Arroyo Street. So that blue area will be under construction as well as a parking area. I think it's really important to note about that area is that that will be a neat public amenity for the community. That will have, we call that a multimodal transit station. You're going to have buses, shuttles, you'll have taxis. There's a kiss and ride area where you can drop people off at the train station. That will be a great new amenity for the City of San Carlos. So these two projects right in and around downtown are pretty significant projects for the City of San Carlos.
Al, it sounds like parking might be a challenge. Is there anything that you've done to mitigate the potential problems?
Yeah. So parking, we think, is going to be a very critical component of keeping things operating well for the businesses in downtown and for the public in general. Wheeler Plaza, the parking area there now has 187 public parking spaces. During the Wheeler Plaza construction project, all those parking spaces are going to have to go away for a while. So we'll see that there's some light blue areas on the screen, all over the screen there and it says free public parking. So all the other parking areas that we have in the downtown will still be available for people to park in. However, well, the question is, what are we going to do when we take these 187 parking spaces offline? What we intend to do is right along Laurel Street, we've purchased the Foodville Building, which is right on Laurel Street, and we intend to demolish that building and that'll be the place for about 50 public parking spaces and we'll have valet service, so a free valet service for people at that location. So you can drive up and you can, they will, you can drop your car off and then go shopping. And we'll have about a three-hour time limit. Right now, it's about two hours in the downtown. We want to give people extra time in acknowledging that there's all this construction activity and it's maybe you'll have to wait a few moments to get your car from valet. So we're going to extend it to three hours. One of the other key things that we're doing is we're working with Samtrans and they have a big parking garage right across the street, right across San Carlos Avenue. So the developer of the Wheeler Plaza project is leasing that entire parking garage. We will have another valet service located there at that parking garage. So you can go to either location. If you're a customer or you're doing some business in the downtown, you're going to be able to either park right on Laurel if you like, or you can drive straight into the Samtrans building and we're looking at self-parking. We will have a valet service person there if they need to park it for you. So we're going to have plenty of parking spaces to replace those 187 parking spaces. One of the other things that we are talking about doing is we have dedicated employee parking in the downtown. This is really critical. We sell employee permit parking passes to the people that work in our downtown. We saw a good number of them. And we have several spaces that are dedicated in our public parking areas for that. What we're going to do is ask, we're going to go ahead and issue those employee permits, but we're going to ask those employees to park directly in the Samtrans building. They will have a guaranteed spot all day long in the Samtrans building. So what that does is it frees up a good number of parking spaces for the public in the downtown in critical locations, but it also allows the employees to have a guaranteed place to park right in the heart of downtown.
How does this affect southern part of Laurel Street? I guess my question is, how far down south does that construction go?
Really it doesn't. It stays up in the northern part, north of Arroyo. So the really, again, it's these two key projects. We see Wheeler Plaza. I think that will be the one that's going to be the most disruptive in the heart of downtown. The Transit Village, we won't have to worry as much. All the parking for construction and things will be taking place on that lot. Now, it is important to note that the construction people will be parking elsewhere and we're looking at having some area along the Samtrans dirt area there along El Camino for the construction contractor folks and we'll shuttle those folks in. So we'll ask those people to park outside the downtown and be shuttled into the downtown.
Well, that makes it more convenient. And you've addressed parking. Are there going to be other impacts to the businesses during this construction?
It is, Wheeler Plaza, it is a big construction project and there's no getting around it. So there will be some disruption to our downtown. I think on a daily basis, it'll be more about noise and things like that. And we're prepared to work with people on that as much as we can. So we do anticipate about a year's worth of real disruption until we get that parking garage built.
Noise, dust?
It's going to be noise, dust, and again, parking will be different than it is now. It may be an inconvenience. And until we get that valet parking service up and running, we're, and we work out the bugs of it, we aren't going to know exactly how disruptive that is. So we do need to anticipate as a community that it could be somewhat disruptive for us for a while.
What's the timeline of this project?
So let me put up a slide on the screen. I do have a timeline slide, so let me show that to you. Let me move to that. And what this timeline shows, it's in different colors. We have some arrows there. So this month, we're going to start exploring some of the utilities and how to underground some of those wires. You may see a little bit of activity in Wheeler Plaza, but it won't affect too much of the parking area, we believe.
And that starts in April?
Yes, that starts in April. And then we're going to go back to our city council and what we're doing is we're keeping our city council informed of all the activities because all this is a work in progress and we're meeting on it constantly. So we want to meet with our council in a public setting at one of their meetings in April, at the end of April, to let them know what's going on. So in June, then we're going to start to see some real activity at the site. We need to demolish the buildings that are associated with Wheeler Plaza, particularly the Foodville Building, and then put the valet area in place. We need to put asphalt down and stripe the spaces, get the valet set up. And we like to get that valet service operational early before the big part of the construction starts. So that's our intent, is to get that done. One thing I'd like to say right at the very beginning is nothing's going to happen until we get that valet parking set up. That is one of the most important things that we can do and do it in a smooth manner. So that's the first thing that has to get done.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yes. Then, so we start construction in June. It's about a year of construction. We're hoping to get that parking garage completed by next summer. So the good news is that we'll be able to use that parking garage for the public next summer. Then it'll take about another year to do the condominium development on top of that, but we'll be using that parking garage in the interim.
And just to clarify, the parking for valet is separate from the parking garage? So you're talking about two different things?
That's right.
You're going to get that valet parking going pretty quickly?
Yes.
Then you start on the parking garage?
Right.
And that's, once again, how many spaces?
In the new parking garage?
In the new parking garage?
That would be about 264 new parking spaces and that's an increase of 75 spaces over what we have today.
All right. So you talked about keeping the city council apprised constantly of the progress. How about keeping the residents and business community apprised? What are you going to be doing?
We think that that's one of the most important things that we do throughout this process is to communicate, perhaps over-communicate with people. So what I'd like to do, I do have a slide that might illustrate how we intend to do that. And basically what this shows is our communication plan. And we have a number of different ways to get the information out to the public. We're also, we want to take a hands-on approach with our downtown merchants. So we are beginning meetings one-on-one with some of the merchants right around Wheeler Plaza. We've already started to do that. We're going to have a community meeting with the downtown merchants as well, some stakeholder meetings in the downtown. One of the things that I would suggest, and I find really effective as a resident myself, is e-notify. If you go to the city's website, you can sign up for a thing called e-notify. And what that is, is it's email blasts that come out that you can sign up for on specific bits of information that you're interested in. We'll be using social media. We'll be using Facebook, Twitter, and things like that, Channel 27 and 99. We'll have city newsletters that'll come from the city right directly to our residents. We'll have a number of public forums and the construction workers themselves are going to be available for people to talk to and they'll be listening too for issues that come up in the community.
27 and 99 channels, are those, is that through Comcast?
Yes.
Okay. And e-notify is just getting those email blasts?
Yes.
And everybody's got a smartphone nowadays, so that would be a great way to stay updated.
I think it's really effective and Facebook is good too.
If people have a concern or if they have any questions, who will be available from the city to address those?
So we've taken that very seriously too. And what we've done is we've put a team in place to deal with this specifically. So I'm going to refer the viewing audience to the screen again. And we have a number of people, as you can see, and there's their contact. We have Lisa Costa-Sanders. She's a city planner with really good knowledge on the Wheeler Plaza project. We hired an outside expert, Dolores Montenegro. She has a lot of experience in the construction industry and she knows how to troubleshoot with the construction issues that we may be having. So if you have a problem and you see some problems or you have issues with any kind of construction anywhere in town, you can contact Dolores Montenegro and that's her contact information on the screen. Laura Tuchel is a local PR person. She grew up here. She knows the business people in the downtown. She has been hired by the developer of Wheeler Plaza. They're called KB Homes. And she will be able to talk directly with the merchants and restaurateurs in the downtown. And so Laura, that's her contact information there. And we're always available. Anybody at City Hall is available. If you just call into City Hall, we will get the information to the right person and try and solve your problem.
Well, that sounds great. Thank you so much, Al, for joining me today. If you want more information about Wheeler Plaza or any city activity, you can always visit the website. I'm Gloria Cohn and this is City Hall in Focus. I'm Gloria Cohn and this is City Hall in Focus. Today in the studio with me is Jay Walter. He's the Director of Public Works for the City of San Carlos. Jay, one of the areas that you oversee as the Director of Public Works is sidewalks. And there's some information that you have for some of the homeowners.
That's right. In the City of San Carlos, sidewalks are a very important asset of the community and we want the property owners to know that they have a responsibility to repair and maintain those sidewalks. If there's sidewalk defects, then there can be a risk and a liability to both the property owner and the city. So we want to make sure we take care of those problems as soon as we know about them.
Is this the way it is in most cities where the homeowner's responsible for that strip of sidewalk?
No, in fact, in most cities, the city's fully responsible for sidewalks. So San Carlos is a little unique in that way.
What exactly do you mean by defects?
Well, I've got a slide that has an example of a sidewalk defect. And so essentially, as we see on the screen now, the sidewalk defect is where there is a slight uplift from one piece of the sidewalk to the next. And that can create a tripping hazard for people that are walking down the sidewalk.
When a homeowner notices this, what's the first thing that they should do?
We want them to notify the city. And there's a couple of ways that they can do that. They can go onto the city's website and report a problem, which will generate an email that'll come to city staff, will be made aware of the location, and then we can notify the property owner that there's been a defect reported to us. The other way is by using the Inform San Carlos app. And I have a slide for that one as well that shows you what that looks like. And then we can have, from any smartphone, a sidewalk defect identified, a message sent to the city, and then we can go ahead and... defect identified, a message sent to the city, and then we can go ahead and figure defect identified, a message sent to the city, and then we can go ahead and figure out a way to fix it. out a way to fix it.
So there's actually an inform button that's on the website where people can So there's actually an inform button that's on the website where people can just click on and then follow the process? just click on and then follow the process?
That's right. The app looks like what's shown on the screen, and so it gives That's right. The app looks like what's shown on the screen, and so it gives the resident the opportunity to report sidewalk defects or other problems to the city so the resident the opportunity to report sidewalk defects or other problems to the city so that the city staff can take care of them. It's like having a lot more eyes on the street that the city staff can take care of them. It's like having a lot more eyes on the street within the city to help us identify and fix problems that come up. within the city to help us identify and fix problems that come up.
Then does the city send a bill to the homeowner for those repairs? Then does the city send a bill to the homeowner for those repairs?
Yes, the city will actually send a bill to the homeowner for repairs if the Yes, the city will actually send a bill to the homeowner for repairs if the homeowner homeowner participates in the city's project to fix the sidewalks. So there's a couple participates in the city's project to fix the sidewalks. So there's a couple of ways of ways to do this. If a homeowner wanted to repair it on their own, they could hire to do this. If a homeowner wanted to repair it on their own, they could hire a licensed a licensed contractor, and then he could get an encroachment permit from the city contractor, and then he could get an encroachment permit from the city and then fix the problem and then fix the problem that way. Or by going in with the city's project, it's far that way. Or by going in with the city's project, it's far less costly to the resident less costly to the resident and they don't have to pay permit fees, and then we'll and they don't have to pay permit fees, and then we'll simply bill them when the work simply bill them when the work is done. is done.
If a homeowner decides to do the work himself, do you know what the cost of If a homeowner decides to do the work himself, do you know what the cost of an encroachment permit is? an encroachment permit is?
Typically, those fees are around $250, and then you'll have to pay the cost Typically, those fees are around $250, and then you'll have to pay the cost of the contractor to actually do the work. of the contractor to actually do the work.
Can a homeowner do the repairs himself without hiring a contractor? Can a homeowner do the repairs himself without hiring a contractor?
No, you can't self-perform the work, as you'd call that. It must be a licensed No, you can't self-perform the work, as you'd call that. It must be a licensed contractor, and they're generally much more familiar with the city's process for permitting contractor, and they're generally much more familiar with the city's process for permitting and the standards that we use for sidewalk repair. and the standards that we use for sidewalk repair.
So I call the city and I can do, have the work done through the city, or I can So I call the city and I can do, have the work done through the city, or I can call a contractor. Do you have a list of the contractors that I might choose from? call a contractor. Do you have a list of the contractors that I might choose from?
We do have a list that we maintain at the Public Works office, and so we can We do have a list that we maintain at the Public Works office, and so we can recommend contractors that are familiar with the city's process and the standards that recommend contractors that are familiar with the city's process and the standards that we use. we use.
Then you also want residents to point out problems or defects in sidewalks Then you also want residents to point out problems or defects in sidewalks that that may not be in front of their property, right? may not be in front of their property, right?
That's right. That's right.
And why would I want to turn in one of my homeowners or neighbors? And why would I want to turn in one of my homeowners or neighbors?
Well, we think it's in the best interest of everyone in the city to be able to identify Well, we think it's in the best interest of everyone in the city to be able to identify quickly where the defects are, and then, so by reporting them, we can fix them. And quickly where the defects are, and then, so by reporting them, we can fix them. And that way, it's not so much about telling on your neighbor, but it's letting everyone that way, it's not so much about telling on your neighbor, but it's letting everyone know and we can get it fixed and then make the sidewalks safer and more passable for know and we can get it fixed and then make the sidewalks safer and more passable for folks with fewer tripping hazards. folks with fewer tripping hazards.
Well, and I did laugh about it, but it truly is a liability, and if someone Well, and I did laugh about it, but it truly is a liability, and if someone does trip on a sidewalk in front of someone's house, that homeowner is responsible? does trip on a sidewalk in front of someone's house, that homeowner is responsible?
That's right, and especially in our downtown area, we'd like folks to let us That's right, and especially in our downtown area, we'd like folks to let us know about defects they find because the sidewalks in front of businesses are sometimes know about defects they find because the sidewalks in front of businesses are sometimes our busiest ones. our busiest ones.
So you want residents to be able to point out issues both in neighborhoods So you want residents to be able to point out issues both in neighborhoods and in the businesses? and in the businesses?
That's right. That's right.
If I'm a renter, should I contact the city or should I contact the owner of If I'm a renter, should I contact the city or should I contact the owner of the property? the property?
Well, we'd like you to contact the city, and then we can make an official notification Well, we'd like you to contact the city, and then we can make an official notification to the landlord, because a lot of times the landlord doesn't live on site, and we want to the landlord, because a lot of times the landlord doesn't live on site, and we want to make sure he knows what his options are. to make sure he knows what his options are.
Crumbling concrete isn't the only thing that is, can be defective in a sidewalk, Crumbling concrete isn't the only thing that is, can be defective in a sidewalk, right? It can be vegetation or tree roots that uplift the sidewalk. right? It can be vegetation or tree roots that uplift the sidewalk.
That's right, and the other thing to make residents aware of is that the landscape That's right, and the other thing to make residents aware of is that the landscape strip between the curb and the sidewalk is also theirs to maintain, and that's where strip between the curb and the sidewalk is also theirs to maintain, and that's where we see a lot of trees growing, and trees oftentimes will lift the sidewalk or break we see a lot of trees growing, and trees oftentimes will lift the sidewalk or break the sidewalk because of their roots. So we need to make sure that they're aware of the sidewalk because of their roots. So we need to make sure that they're aware of that as well. I have a slide that shows that, and as you can see on that slide, the root that as well. I have a slide that shows that, and as you can see on that slide, the root from the tree next door has created some real problems there. All of those need to from the tree next door has created some real problems there. All of those need to be fixed, and we would do that under our sidewalk program. be fixed, and we would do that under our sidewalk program.
You talked about that strip of landscaping is, you talk about the trees that might You talked about that strip of landscaping is, you talk about the trees that might pose pose a problem. What about like a bush that's crawling on the sidewalk or, you know, reaching a problem. What about like a bush that's crawling on the sidewalk or, you know, reaching over into the sidewalk that's obstructing people's ability to walk up and down freely? over into the sidewalk that's obstructing people's ability to walk up and down freely? What happens in that case? What happens in that case?
That's another example of where we'd like the residents to let us know, and That's another example of where we'd like the residents to let us know, and that can be through the Inform San Carlos app or, again, via the city website. We'll that can be through the Inform San Carlos app or, again, via the city website. We'll let the property owner know that their vegetation either needs to be trimmed or removed, send let the property owner know that their vegetation either needs to be trimmed or removed, send them a notice about that, and then we'll ask them to take care of it, and that way them a notice about that, and then we'll ask them to take care of it, and that way we can keep the sidewalks more passable, because the last thing we want is for people we can keep the sidewalks more passable, because the last thing we want is for people to step off the curb in areas where it may not be safe to do so, just to avoid a bush to step off the curb in areas where it may not be safe to do so, just to avoid a bush or something overhanging the sidewalk. or something overhanging the sidewalk.
What if I decide to plant a new tree in that strip? Do you have a list of trees What if I decide to plant a new tree in that strip? Do you have a list of trees that would, are better suited for that type of space? that would, are better suited for that type of space?
We do, and that information is available through our planning division, and that We do, and that information is available through our planning division, and that can be accessed on the city website as well. can be accessed on the city website as well.
Can you talk about being a part of the program that you talked about, that where Can you talk about being a part of the program that you talked about, that where the city will come in and do the repairs? the city will come in and do the repairs?
Sure. The city has a project that we do every year, and because there's so Sure. The city has a project that we do every year, and because there's so many sidewalk defects that we become aware of, we hire a contractor to go out and fix many sidewalk defects that we become aware of, we hire a contractor to go out and fix all of them. And so the property owner has the opportunity to opt into the program, all of them. And so the property owner has the opportunity to opt into the program, as we would say, where we'll fix the defect on their property, and then we'll have the as we would say, where we'll fix the defect on their property, and then we'll have the bill sent to them for the work that's performed. Now, the advantage to that is that we'll bill sent to them for the work that's performed. Now, the advantage to that is that we'll hire a contractor at a much lower cost for the concrete repair, and there's no permit hire a contractor at a much lower cost for the concrete repair, and there's no permit cost to the property owner. So it's an advantage all the way around. We get a lot of defects cost to the property owner. So it's an advantage all the way around. We get a lot of defects repaired and residents get a lower cost. repaired and residents get a lower cost.
San Carlos is known as the city of good living, and having safe sidewalks that San Carlos is known as the city of good living, and having safe sidewalks that are not in disrepair contribute to the fact that you've had this moniker for many, many are not in disrepair contribute to the fact that you've had this moniker for many, many years. years.
Absolutely, and we want to make sure that with the increase in the number of Absolutely, and we want to make sure that with the increase in the number of people that are walking around town, to schools, to the downtown, to various places, people that are walking around town, to schools, to the downtown, to various places, that everywhere we can find the defects, we want to try to fix them so that we have that everywhere we can find the defects, we want to try to fix them so that we have less problem from people tripping as they're walking along. less problem from people tripping as they're walking along.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you all for watching. If you want more information about sidewalks Thank you, Jay. Thank you all for watching. If you want more information about sidewalks or anything as it relates to the city, please visit their website. I'm Gloria Cohn and or anything as it relates to the city, please visit their website. I'm Gloria Cohn and this is City Hall in Focus. this is City Hall in Focus. I'm Gloria Cohn and this is City Hall in Focus. Today Jay Walter is here. He's the Director of Public Works for the City of San Carlos. Jay, the City of San Carlos is a member of the National League of Cities. What is that?
Well, that's an organization that's nationwide, and they basically look out for the interests of cities all over the country, advocating and looking for opportunities.
And you bring that up because it's important to know that they're looking out for municipalities, but there's something specific you want to talk about as it relates to homeowners and sewer lines that come into the house, right?
That's right. The National League of Cities has partnered with a company called Utility Service Partners, and what they're offering to residents of the city is a warranty program for sewer lines, water lines, and in-home plumbing lines that can help pay for some very costly repairs.
So what you're saying is that homeowners are responsible for these lines that come into our house? We're responsible for maintaining them, repairing them?
That's right. In the City of San Carlos, the sewer lines and the water lines are the property owner's responsibility, and so if you can provide an opportunity for some insurance coverage, then it may not be such a big hit to the pocketbook if they have a problem with one of those lines.
Well, just, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but I'm just wondering how many people are aware of that?
Well, nobody at this point in time that we're aware of, because property owners will have a problem with their sewer line or their water line, they'll call for help and realize that they have a huge out-of-pocket expense they've got to take care of.
So Utility Services Partner is the name of the firm?
That's right.
And this is like an insurance policy for homeowners?
It is, and it's, as far as we can tell, a very affordable insurance policy to take care of those repairs.
How do we get involved with this program as homeowners?
Well, the city has chosen to participate with the National League of Cities and partner with Utility Service Partners, and what's going to happen is there's going to be a letter that'll go out to residents. It'll inform them of the program, what the options are, what the costs are, and how they can sign up.
And how will you let the homeowners know, then?
Well, that's the letter that'll come directly from Utility Service Partners.
Okay, so it's not going to be junk mail, right?
No.
So we need to watch out for that as we get those letters?
That's right, and it will have a city seal, and it'll be signed by a city official as well as Utility Service Partners, so residents can be comforted in the fact that this is a city-sanctioned program, although it's not funded by the city.
All right. So then the unfortunate thing happens. My sewer line breaks. What's the first thing I need to do?
Well, if you're a covered homeowner, then Utility Service Partners provides a phone number that you can call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, weekends and holidays, and they will put you in touch with a local plumbing contractor who will be on scene within a couple of hours. They'll assess the problem and then they'll make the repair.
How much will this cost?
Well, the options now range from about $6 to $9 per month, and that's giving the homeowner a choice. They can look to enroll with the sewer line, water line, or in-home plumbing repairs altogether, or only one of them if they choose. And the range of coverage, it could be as much as about $8,500 for the type of repair that may be needed.
If we opt into this program, and let me ask, can we opt in anytime?
You can opt in anytime after the program becomes available.
All right. When we opt into this program and I pay the $6 to $9 a month, whatever it is, something happens, they come out, there will be no additional cost to the homeowner?
That's right. No deductibles, no out-of-pocket expense. Now, there are limits on what the coverages are, and that's clearly specified in the information that's provided to the homeowner. But they base it on what the typical repair cost would be. Now, if it's something very complex, then there might be some additional cost to a homeowner, but generally, it'll be covered by what they're providing.
Do you know how many lines are coming into any particular home or the average home?
Well, every home has a water line and a sewer line that enter the house along the property from the street, and then every home also has water lines and plumbing lines inside the house, upstairs, downstairs, and throughout.
So the ones specifically from the outside inside is what the USP UPS?
USP.
USP, thanks, will be covering?
That's right, but also the homeowner can choose to have an option to cover the plumbing inside the house, which is a big advantage because a lot of times, a repair that's needed, you may see it quite clearly outside the house on your property, but if you have a problem that's happening within your walls or below your floor, you may not see it for a long time, and by then you may have had a lot of damage that would have come from water or the waste that is leaking slowly.
So once again, the program is called Utility?
The program is through a company called Utility Service Partners, and it's a service line warranty program is the actual title of it.
Well, thank you very much, Jay, and for more information on this new program, you can always go to the website of the City of San Carlos. Thank you for joining us. I'm Gloria Cohn and this is City Hall in Focus. In the not-too-distant future, you are going to see a transformation take place along El Camino in San Carlos. I'm Gloria Cohn and this is City Hall in Focus. Joining me in the studio is Al Savay, the Director of Economic and Community Development for the City of San Carlos. Al, what, where is this located? Besides El Camino, there's got to be something more specific, right?
Sure, yeah. So what I'd like to do is show you a slide on the screen and take a bird's eye view of the location and describe it to you so we can all see where it is. So on the screen, you can see that we have two red boxes there. And those red boxes are right along the east side of El Camino Real. And it's bisected by Holly Street. So the red box on the top of the screen is an area where apartments will be. So is the box on the lower part of the screen, the red box there. It's about eight acres along El Camino Real. And currently, as you drive down El Camino Real, that area is just dirt. And so that's the location. Again, it's bisected by Holly Street. And the terminus of San Carlos Avenue is right where the historic Depot is. And so there's going to be some commercial retail there. Now, the green box that you see on the screen is a transit center. It's really separate from the Transit Village project, but it's very important and it's integral to the entire development. So I'm going to talk about both of those today.
And the northernmost tip of that red box that we're seeing is, what street is that?
The northernmost tip of it, I'd say Oak Street.
Oak Street. The name of this project is called Transit Village. So tell me a little bit more about Transit Village and how it came about.
So the Transit Village is a 202 apartment unit development with about 26,000 square feet of commercial retail space. And in planning, we call it a transit-oriented development project. And what I mean by that is transit-oriented development is where you have housing and perhaps some retail in very close proximity to rapid transit. And in this case, the intent of this whole development was to put higher-density housing and retail right where you could access the Caltrain station and buses. So people don't have to use their cars as much. They can get on Caltrain, they can go up to San Francisco or down to San Jose and go to their jobs and then come home at night without using their cars. So we call it a transit-oriented development. And so that's why we call it a Transit Village.
How did it come about?
So the way it came about is for many years now, on the east side of El Camino Real, essentially, it's been dirt. And the dirt started, there used to be businesses there, by the way. And so what happened is a number of years ago, more than a decade ago, the city embarked upon a, what we call a grade separation project, where the city separated the train tracks and rose it above El Camino Real so people could drive underneath El Camino Real. It was creating a lot of traffic issues in the past. So it created this dirt area where those businesses used to be after the grade separation project was constructed. And so for many years, it just sat like that. And it's sort of been the gateway to our community. A few years ago, about eight or 10 years ago, the San Mateo County Transit Authority, who owns the property, decided it's time to do something with this property. So they're the owners of the property.
Yeah, the El Camino used to be the Grand Boulevard and it wasn't looking so grand anymore, is that right?
Right, right. So that's true. Now, I'm glad you mentioned the Grand Boulevard. So the Grand Boulevard, there's a thing called the Grand Boulevard Initiative. And what the Grand Boulevard Initiative is, is about 19 cities and the counties of San Mateo and Santa Clara, number of regional agencies as well. And the idea is to transform what is our Grand Boulevard into something more aesthetically pleasing, that has better mobility for pedestrians, bikes, and cars, and really rise it up. Over the years, there's a lot of strip commercial that's maybe no longer as viable as it once was. So the idea is how can we raise this up into really a Grand Boulevard again? We believe that this project is a really great example of that.
You talked about 19 cities. Is San Carlos the first to begin this transformation?
If not the first, one of the first, yes.
And you're in a relationship with the County Transit District because they own the land?
Well, it's not-